My name is Ron Schubert. Tonight I will be the Chair of this zoning board of appeals. This, as you all know, is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Before we start, let's stand and say the pledge of the flag. Now, just some announcements. In any event of a fire or an emergency, follow the exit signs on these two doors to your, on this side of the building. Leave the room and either go to the back or to the front and leave the building. Do not use the elevator. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live online. Tonight, we have 13 items on the agenda. If you don't want to wait to hear the final outcome of your matter, you can call the town clerk's office tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m. to hear the results of any given petition. Also, the next meeting of the zoning board of appeals is August 15th at 6:30 p.m. There won't be a meeting in July. Would the deputy clerk please call the roll? Present.
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 Thank you. In addition to the board present are Daniel Lutowski, Assistant Planning Director, Thomas Voight, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Sam Alba, and Nora Robshaw, both deputy town attorneys. First, we have to address the approval of the minutes from our prior meeting, which was held on May 16th, 2023. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second. Any opposition? Hearing none, approved four zero. What I have to announce for those of you who are here concerning items number 12 and 13, at the request of the petitioner, both those matters have been adjourned to our next meeting in August, so we will not be conducting a hearing tonight. We want to conduct the hearing and hear that matter when we have a full board present. So, let me at this time, do we have a motion adjourned 12 and 13?
So moved.
Second. Opposition? No. Okay, carried. If you're coming up to speak, please talk directly into the microphone, which is over there. Sign in on the sheet at the podium with your name and address, then state your name and address for the record. And everyone, of course, please silence your cellphones. I'll do the same myself. First item on the agenda tonight is 90 Pierce Drive. That hearing took place at our last meeting, and the matter was adjourned to allow the petitioner to revise their plan. Is the petitioner present tonight?
Yes.
Please come forward and come to the podium.
Hi, Mike Beecham, 90 Pierce Drive.
Andrea Beecham, 90 Pierce Drive.
Okay, I'll get started. We came last time to asking for a variance on our, on our side yard so we could extend the fence out from, from the back into the side yard. Because of the, the way the house is situated on the property, that side of the house was longer than the front of the house. So they said that. The initial ruling was that you could only go 10 feet. So we talked it, we talked it through a little bit and talked about a, having an external side yard defined to the house. And then the question came up on where exactly do we want the fence? And then we talked about a tree that was in the way that we want to include in the fence. And the board asked us to get more information and come back with more numbers. So we did. So what we're asking for is we want to extend that fence from the, the back from the house, 34 feet on the back property, and 34 feet on the front of the house, and then go all the way across.
Sixty.
What did I mean?
Sixty.
Six, across 60 feet. And that will allow six feet clearance to the edge of the property, and then another foot to the sidewalk. And then the sidewalk and, and grass is another 10 feet to the street. So there's, there's, there's a fair amount of clearance there. We wanted to include the oak tree. That's why we asked, that's why we're asking for 34 feet. There it is. We, the dog goes with us. But, so that's where we want to put the fence. We want to include the oak tree. It's about four feet from that fence line, and it would also be four feet from the back fence line, too. So it's, it'd be perfectly centered in the corner there. And, and can we go back to the last picture? What we're also trying to do is we, we try to get as close as we can to be able to include the, the tree, but also taking into consideration the, the large bushes that are already in the driveway next to it, because it, so it's only about two feet more further out than the bushes as far as line of sight. So we, we didn't think that was going to be too bad, especially with the six feet to the sidewalk, to the property, and then the 10 feet to the street. So this is what we're looking for right now, 34 feet from the, the house out. Questions?
Just for clarity, you initially asked for zero feet from the property line, and now you're asking for six feet from the property line?
Yes. We, we backed it up.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Have you spoken to a installer for the, for the fence, and, and he thinks he's going to be able to install it on that?
Yes, yes. We had multiple companies come out, and they all felt comfortable going with that, that amount of feet from the fence, I mean, from the tree.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Ellen? No, we had our, we closed it last time. Yeah. Thanks, Ellen. You'll move to approve?
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried? Good then. Yeah, I'm sorry. Any opposition? Okay, all.
How do we, what's our next step for getting the permit? Do we come back and talk to the panel?
You don't need a permit, sir. You're welcome to proceed with your installation. You will get an electronic copy of this resolution probably in the next five days.
Thank you.
Thank you. No. Have a great day.
Next item on the agenda is 3800 Sheridan Drive. If I recall, the petitioner was not here last time. Is the petitioner here tonight? I guess so. Please state your name and.
Jason Burford with GPI Consulting Engineers on behalf of the applicant.
Would you please speak into the microphone, too? Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay, so what we're here seeking a variance for is what's been highlighted in the red line there. Currently, that is a residential next door, MFR 5. That's the property line. The code requires a 15-foot setback in order to occupy those with parking spaces. We're requesting that to be reduced to 10.5. This all resulted from, as, because it's under construction, the project is under construction, with some looking at some dumpster locations and things, we, we needed a bigger dumpster pad, so we lost four spaces in order to move that dumpster pad where it is now. So, we're just in, in crouching, I guess, if you want to call it that, into that setback. Interesting thing about that setback, even though it's zoned residential, it is currently a parking lot in that space at the neighbors, the neighbors to the west there. So the impact to, it's not an impact to somebody's backyard, it's not an impact to any kind of recreational, it's an impact to a parking lot. We adjusted the fence to line up with the dumpster. We also kept the street light, or not the street light, but the parking lot light away from the edge, so it won't impact at all the neighboring lot. So that's what we're seeking the variance for, is to be able to have a full parking space for them, so it's roughly 40 feet wide in that green area there.
Board members, do you have any questions? Yes, Ellen, go ahead.
The green space that you're not parking cars in, that's a drive-through area? Or is that an actual parking lot?
No, that, that, what's highlighted green there is going to be green space. There's going to be landscaping, there's going to be plantings in order to screen the parking lot. What we're showing is what we're seeking to get, is that 18-foot depth on that last parking space. And I understand, too, these are inventory parking spaces for the auto dealership, so there's not a lot of, you know, they're not moving cars in and out, there's not the exhaust, there's not all of that activity happening in a, in operating parking space.
Other questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this petition? Seeing no one, at this time, we close the public hearing. Board members, if you'd like to, any comments you'd like?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Go ahead. Okay, carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda tonight, number three, just give me a minute here, is 4196 Sheridan Drive Temporary Use Permit. Petitioner?
Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals. Ari Goldberg for the petitioners. Oh, this temporary use permit request was first submitted in May 15. Since then, there's been a lot of activity in regards to the application. We did learn of a letter submitted by one of the neighbors. I understand there's many members of the public here to speak on both sides of the issue, and then earlier today, the planning department issued a letter on their stance. We'd like to, the advice that was given, or the recommendation given by your planning department was to let the public speak, to enter that testimony into the public record, and then request a tabling. We're going to adopt that advice as well. So for tonight, all we're looking for is no decision from this board, but to let the public speak, keep the public hearing open, and table the item for appearance again at your August 15 hearing. And we're, we'd like to use that time to further discuss with some of the neighbors who are going to speak, and some of the neighbors who have written letters about the use, about possible mitigation, as well as further the related action in Amherst Housing Court. So I'd appreciate letting the public speak, keeping the public here open, and then a tabling of the item.
I assume you're not making a presentation at this time?
No, I'll reserve that to see what happens, because I think there's, there's plenty in flux, and I want to, and there's a long agenda.
Okay. Public? Line up and? Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Just please sign your name, identify yourself. Mr. Brand?
I'm Eric Brand, Mr. Schubert, and I live at 88 Oakview Drive, Amherst 14221. Good evening to you all. Although I'm outside the radius of neighbors who must be notified of the hearing for an opportunity to speak, I'm an interested party. Accordingly, I support the petition of Cameron and Griffin Tolzma for temporary use permit and ask for your approval. I am also a satisfied customer of Griffin, who indeed has a small and struggling business, cutting lawns and plowing snow. And as you know from our recent weather, two snowstorms of major proportions, it's not easy. And he does it almost entirely in our town of Amherst, where I have lived for 50 years. This business of landscape services for which he asks the T-U-P is not a Russell's kind of landscape service, it's not a Lavacott with a steady stream of automobiles and trucks and customers, nor is it like the other businesses nearby the subject property, for example, a gas station, Cadillac dealer, Basil Used Car Lot, office building and hotel, all of which we need, use, and I admire. However, this business, this commercial activity not yet permitted, is the most innocuous business you can imagine. In fact, I suspect that most landscapers probably do what Griffin does, work out of their house, and if they're lucky, they have a wife, and if they're really lucky, she's willing to do the books and take the telephone calls and listen to the client's complaint. Griffin and Cameron have spent a great deal of time in attempting to relocate their business. Griffin's business, Cameron's not involved in it, but he owns the house with his brother. They've tried to do that in Amherst, where, as you would expect, and I'm happy to say, property is very expensive, priced high and will sell high, and looking forward to that when I retire. Virtually all or most of Griffin's customers are located in Amherst, so it makes great sense and economic sense for him to relocate there. But particularly because of the price, and it's too expensive to do that, they have to search for another alternative. They must look longer and harder and further away, maybe moving as far as a Pendleton or an Akron in order to stay in business. Obviously, he's going to be more distant from his customers, they're going to suffer unfortunately from that, because there's travel time, there's gasoline issues, and when the weather's bad, people who drive plows have the same problems as everybody else. Can you do it? We're hopeful that if you deny the petition, which we ask you not to do, please grant it. He can do it. But he would do so, could only do so if you deny it, and you give him reasonably ample time for him to relocate his business. Thank you. And if he doesn't have that time, or if he doesn't get the approval, I'm afraid a struggling business, which he's been heroic in keeping running, might suffer the consequences of going out of business. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Any questions? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jim Radomski. My wife and I live at 35 Sunrise, which is the fourth house right there from Sheridan Drive. So my yard backs up to where Tolzma's property is, there's a vacant lot in between, but I've lived there for 12 years, and I have intimate knowledge of what goes on. And I'm going to tell you that from living there, there is nothing that is offensive in any way, nothing is bothersome in any way, there's no noise, no smell, no vibrations, no activity that, from what goes on over there, nothing's unsightly that would make me think it would, it would benefit the town of Amherst by denying this petition. I think he's doing a great job there, and it's just very beneficial for the town of Amherst to allow him to keep running a business there. On that, on that note, my wife and I own two pizza restaurants, pizza restaurants in the town of Amherst, and I've gotten to know Griffin over the years, just through the business community. And he is a hard-working, good kid that deserves an opportunity to stay in Amherst to help Amherst grow in a positive way. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alana Pole Hughes. I'm at 4200 Sheridan Drive, and I am the parcel immediately to the east of the parcel in question at this petition. I am also a customer of Tolzma Services. I have no problem with the business being there. I'm, I know that it supports several year-round and several seasonal employees, so it's great to keep people employed. And if the business has to move away from that location, I ask that Griffin be given enough time to find an adequate location so that it is not impacting his business, but he's actually continuing that his father started many years ago, and I'd hate to see it go out of business, because they really want to serve the community. I don't know what else to say, but I am in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Brand. I reside at 107 Donnelly Boulevard, which is not quite two blocks away from the property. I also, I consider myself a neighbor because of my proximity. I also utilize for lawn cutting service and snow plowing, and most of the customers are in the Amherst area, so I ask kindly and respectfully request that you, you grant him the temporary use permit. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Corber. I live at 54 Frank Hauser. My property is directly behind 4196 Sheridan Drive. Chairman and board members, I had submitted a letter, and if you would mind putting the pictures up on the screen. There are two things that the application did not address. I have spoken to both Cameron and Griffin about them. The first is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers designation. You have a copy of it, I submitted it. And I would like to read on page two and three, based on the Corps' review and the site reevaluation of the Westwood site, the Corps issued a new jurisdictional determination to Men's Capital Partners on July 21st, 2016. This determination was coordinated with both the U.S. EPA and the Corps of Engineers Headquarters in accordance with current requirements. The new jurisdictional determination adds Channel 1 as a regulated water of the U.S. and reaffirms that Elica Creek is a regulated water of the U.S. Channel 1 is ditch 5C in Amherst, that historically goes from Elica Creek and it runs out to Beiser Creek. It runs through the Westwood, it runs adjacent to my property and my neighbor's property, and through the Sheridan Drive properties, including 4196 Sheridan Drive. In the letter, I had stated that I had spoken with the individual from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and he said that there are necessary protocols for their property with regulated waters being on them. The second issue is screening. Oh, and that is another thing. On the page, number 13 of their special assessment, the attorney did not acknowledge that there were regulated waters on the special assessment review that he had submitted. As far as the screening is concerned, I had been told quite a while ago by both Cameron and Griffin that there would be screening, because this is what I look at from my, the back of my house. When I reviewed the application and the special review, I was a little bit concerned because I see nothing about screening for the property if they are permitted to have the two-year temporary use permit. The screening would be important as far as from the house to where the regulated waters go, because the view encapsulates, encapsulates all of that. With the screening, it needs to be high enough, because in one of the first pictures, an earth mover, I bet that one, that's as high as the roof of line of the house where it's stored on the property. And there is other earth movers on that property as well. So when I had looked at what the screening should be as far as height, I also, and I put in the letter, had to take into consideration that my property happens to sit highest point on Frank Hauser. So not only am I looking at it, I'm looking down at it. So those are the two things that I had put together. I also submitted a letter from Josh James. He did an interior inspection of my home and an exterior inspection, and he did see the business operating, as did Jim Pisaki, the building inspector. And in that letter, he has stated that if there is no screening for their property, should you approve the temporary use permit, that it would decrease the value of my property. Does anybody ask questions?
Board members?
When, when did you move into here?
21 years ago.
And, and?
Why wasn't it an issue before this?
No, that wasn't going to be my question.
I would like to answer that, though, if you would.
After, after I ask mine.
Okay.
And how long have they been in business?
And this is going to answer my question to your question. When I had moved in, oh, I'm 74 now. When I had moved into the property, there were considerable trees and shrubage behind the property. Over the last three and a half, four years, the, the ash bores, they had really destroyed the trees. And it took me two years talking to Griffin and Cameron to get three of the trees down. The fourth one I paid for myself, and then I and my youth work girl would go back, now I do call them, and say, can I go back and clear your shrubs and bushes? Because they are honeysuckle, buckthorn, those are invasive species. And then there's this vine, in fact, their mother visited my house about it. I'm getting to the age where I don't want to clean up anybody else's property anymore. Cameron did come, come out, and he finally cleared it all out a couple months ago, which gives even more a direct view of this property. Did I answer your question?
I was just looking to see how long they had been in business while you've lived there.
I don't know how long they've been operating.
But it sounds like the issue now for you is you've helped or they've cleaned out some areas that were of concern for you, and in doing so, now you can see back there.
Yes. Clearly.
And you don't like what you're seeing?
Well, I took pictures of it, and I have more. I mean, it's obvious.
Okay. Thank you.
Especially when it's an R3 property.
Board members? Questions? I have, Ms. Corber, I have one question. It sounds like the issue here is screening, but it sounds also like screening is impossible to achieve, because you've indicated that you're so high up on Frank Hauser, that, I mean, is that really the issue here, that if you had screening, you would?
Well, the U.S. Army Corps, the regulated waters on the property. The properties next to them, 4188, which the zoning board allowed to run it, put a development up, although they haven't done it yet.
Right.
That had to also go through regulation for the delineation, and in fact, the delineation started, I believe, with that on 4188 Sheridan, if I remember correctly. Now, I don't think it's impossible. In fact, Cameron came to my house last night. I'm here tonight because he asked me to come. And there was discussion between the two of us of what are you going to do? And I said, an eight-to-10-foot fence should be able to screen it, or put in very dense evergreens all along the perimeter, high enough to be able to screen it. And I think that would take care of it. And then we discussed other things, such as putting a two-foot berm up and then putting the evergreens. We looked at the house on Sheridan, no, not Sheridan, I'm sorry, it's on Park Club and North Forest, and they've done that with the berm. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate to say it's imp- with the berm. So I don't think it would be appropriate to say it's impossible. Now, my utopia, my utopia is not to have it, but I also leave that up to you. That's your determination, not mine.
Thank you very much.
Is that it? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Morrow. I live at 150 Frank Hauser Road. So I also live directly behind the Tolzmas. I think the south line of my property and the north line of their property meet. My husband, Bob, is here, too. We've lived in this property for the last 38 years. I actually am also a customer of Tolzma. They've done, worked for me for a number of years to remove my snow, to take care of my landscaping. I have absolutely no objection to their, to their request. We sit out in our yard as much as we can. I never hear them. There is no, there's no noise. There's, there's no odor. There's no objection at all. I walk my dog past their property every single morning, and the property, from what I can see, appears to be very well-kept. Yeah, there are, there are machineries in the back, but, you know, I don't even hear that. I hear the young men 24/7, right? But I don't, I don't hear that, right? They're, I will tell you from my own personal experience, they are respectful, polite, well, hard-working young men. And I'm hoping that, that, you know, with the support that they're getting here today, and with some accommodations that they may have to take care of, that they'll be allowed to be able to continue in their business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Linda Peretti, 140 Frank Hauser. I live directly behind Griffin. We do have woods in between our two properties that are beautiful and well-preserved. And I never hear or see anything at all. And he actually does work for us, too, and we appreciate everything that he does. So I hope you approve this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Evan Russell. I was a longtime resident of Amherst. I'm currently in North Tonawanda. However, I lived in Amherst for 27 years. I actually also owned the pizzeria that he owned for four and a half years. We, my mother and I owned it for the first two years of COVID. And while I am a routine customer of Griffin's, I'm more here to speak on his character. While we owned Pizza Works, one of the first things I was told when we took over was, this is the Tolzma family. And I had the privilege of meeting Greg Tolzma, who is Griffin and Cameron's father, who owned the business prior. And the amount of class that man had was unmatched. And while I thought I would never meet a person like that again, along came Griffin Tolzma. When Griffin took over the business, he was classy, he was professional, young, probably wasn't ready for it, but he learned, the hard way, I will say. But anytime he came into Pizza Works, he buried his head in whatever work he had to do, because he didn't have very much time. He was always polite. He was always respectful to myself, to our coworkers, to my mother, to anyone who was in there. He always took care of his table, his food, anything else, always said please, always said thank you. I've never had to tell him to quiet down, that's for sure. And, I mean, I, again, speaking on his character, I can tell you that if someone, anything that Griffin gets asked to do, he does, and he does it well, and he does it respectfully. So although I don't live right around the corner, and I can't speak to, if there's a lot of noise or anything along those lines, I can say that the pictures that were provided that have Tolzma's name on the side of the vehicle, most people see that, and they see a young kid who took over a business and is succeeding. And I think that says a lot more than anything else that was said today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tolzma. Sandra referenced me, Sandra Corber. I'm Griffin and Cameron's mother, and I can answer the question that you asked, Kelly. The business has been in business for approximately 40 years. I was married to Greg Tolzma, and he has had, he had some activity in and out of that property before Sandra bought her house 21 years ago. Karen and Griffin inherited that property from their father when he passed away six years ago, 17 and 22. So they are hardworking. They have a great work ethic. I'm not biased. I can, I think you've heard some of the other people speak to that. I was in Sandra's house, as she referenced, about a year and a half ago, I think it was, because I wanted to speak on their behalf and discuss the issues that she had before coming to, you know, court or a hearing. I was hoping that we could resolve the issues that she had. And I did get a good vantage point from her yard. There really wasn't anything, in my estimation, that, I could see some of the things that she had pointed out in the pictures and the photos, that had been there when Greg was alive, and when Greg was, had some slight business operation and activity at that property. Some of it has been there. So it was there prior to her purchasing the home, or since she's been living there in 21 years, before Griffin took over his father's business when he passed away. I think that her request to remove that foliage probably gave her a very clear vantage point. I'm not quite clear on why she wanted it removed, because she called it invasive, but it seems to be species of plant that, and bushes, that you see all over. I'm also aware that she requested the gas station owner at the corner of Sheridan and Frank Hauser to remove some foliage, trees, a lot of foliage that was adjacent to his property and between his property and her property. So she made that request as well. I'm not sure why she wants all of the foliage removed. But in any case, I, I think that request actually has probably heightened her awareness and her view. I'm not sure why she did that, but I understand the request that's being made here, and I would only hope that you consider that these are two hard, young men that are hardworking. They're taking care of their property. They're learning how to do that, because it's 17 and 22. Owning three pieces of property is a learning experience, and their interest is to make it better, and to improve it, and to help Amherst be a better place and a good community. And I'm not sure, you know, why you would not agree with that. And at the minimum, a temporary request, a temporary use permit would be my hopes on your behalf, on your part, on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tolzma, and I live at the residence 4196 Sheridan Drive. We've been there 25, six years, and Griffin's dad started, you know, was there. And things have changed, but Griffin taking over the business at 17, 18 years old, and he really has done a wonderful job. Things aren't always perfect, but we have adjusted. He has made, done everything that he can, and things are working for us, with my husband and our two daughters, who are adults, and we all have cars, and we all make it work, and we are making it work. He's, I'm glad he's there, too. If my, we're not home, and my daughters, if anything is needed, like Lisa said, or somebody else said, that he, Griffin is his dad. You know, he, he took me to get washer and dryer, and his mannerisms, just the way he helps people in the area and the neighbors, he'll do anything for you, and he's, he's there. And he's a good advocate for Amherst and the people in our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Pedini. I live at 17 Hampton Court.
So 17 what?
17 Hampton Court. It's about a block away from Griffin Tolzma, and I'm here to show my support for him. I live pretty close and consider us neighbors, and don't see or hear any commotion. And when I do see the trucks around, I just know that the neighborhood's going to be looking good. So I'm in support of the variance. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, the hearing now is closed. Oh, I'm, go, go ahead.
Sorry. Cameron Tolzma, I am one of the petitioners for this application. I want to express my thanks to you for hearing from us. I want to express my thanks to everybody that came out to support my brother more than anybody. And I want to give you guys a little bit of context and color around our situation. The house where the business is at, where my family lives, has been in our family for over 80 years. It was built by our great-grandfather. The business has used the property for over 40 years. It was started by my father when he was about the same age as my brother was when he took it over. Griffin is one of the hardest-working people I've ever seen. My father taught me how to be a hard worker as well. Griffin went the business route. I was lucky enough to go to college and work at a bank, so my job's a little bit easier on a day-to-day basis than anything he's ever dealt with. He is, again, as many people have said, the spitting image of my dad. Every time I see him, I miss him, or I miss my dad because of what I see in Griffin, but it makes me so happy that he's doing this. And I don't want it to stop just because of an issue that I think is hopefully something we can resolve. A little context as well. I mean, for, for seven days during the worst storm the city's seen, I was off of work. I got in the truck next to him and watched him tirelessly work for people, his customers, and people that weren't his customers that called him in need of assistance, going out with, rallying his, his people, and doing whatever he could to try to help the city and the town in one of the worst crises I think we've seen weather-wise and probably ever. That being said, I did invite everybody out, because I want to hear the concerns that were raised today, and we fully intend to address those. We do have intentions to replace a lot of the screening that we removed, again, much of which was an invasive species, and as I've seen after we have taken it out, is hard to maintain. So the business specializes in that type of activity. It's something where we have, or Griffin has, I should say, provided his services to many of the neighbors, value-add improvements to their property, value-add maintenance to their property. And again, with the property that we own, we fully intend to remediate any types of concerns that were raised today. Fencing for screening, foliage, natural foliage for screening, what have you, it's something that I think we can absolutely do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
My name is Griffin Tolzma. I am the owner of the property and the business. And upon permitted use of the property, I'd be more than willing to make any changes necessary, especially asked by Sandra. Put up a six-foot or eight-foot-high pine fence, and stagger conifer trees, and create that privacy screening, and maintain and uphold the organicness of the property, and not make any permanent changes, because eventually I would, down the line when I'm in a better place, be willing to relocate. But right now, I, I really need the property for what it's been used for the past 40 years. But I am willing to make any changes necessary. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions, Mr. Tolzma?
No.
All right. Thank you, everyone. The hearing now is closed. Can I have a motion now to adjourn it so that we can?
I'll make that motion.
All right. I was going to say, so that we can look at this again in our August meeting, and then make a decision.
Second.
Second. Favor?
Yes. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, carried. So it's adjourned to our next meeting in August. Thank you, everyone, for your input tonight. All right. Number 466 Beechwood. Just give me one minute, please. All right, petitioner?
Good evening, members of the zoning board. Ari Goldberg for the petitioner Bob Schell, Robert Schell, owner of 66 Beet Ridge Drive in the town of Amherst. This is a request, an area variance to replace an existing fence at six-and-a-half-foot setback where 10 is required. Quickly going through the relevant town law 267B area variance criteria. It's a replacement of the fence at the same exact spot where it already is. I think to that end, it won't cause any detriment to the neighborhood. The applicant also submitted various pictures of other area fences with a reduced setback similar to what is requested here. It will also give the opportunity to replace the older fence, which is older than me, I think, with a new fence. In terms of substantiality, this is three-and-a-half feet. It's not too much in terms of pure numbers, but also it doesn't cause harm to the area. So often, the substantial factor test is not just pure numbers, but whether or not it causes harm to the area. Given that the fence is replacing what's already there with a new fence, there's no harm in that regard. In terms of environmental impact, under the SECA regulations 6-NYR 617, type, it is type-two action for single-family, two-family, or three-family dwellings requesting a variance, as well as lot line or setback adjustments. And that's exactly where we fit in. So that's indicative that there's no environmental impact. And similar to the other points that I mentioned, it's replacing the fence that's already there. In terms of self-created, as you know, it's a balancing test, so that's not your ultimate consideration. They purchased the house with the fence there, and they're replacing it on the same, on the same setback. To the extent it is self-created, again, it's a balancing test, and I think on the weight of factors one, three, and four, it's clear that the benefit to the applicant significantly outweighs any supposed detriment to the community. Here to answer any questions and respond to any comments from the public. Thank you for your time. Yes, Mr. Bragg?
Where, where is the property line? Because in the, in the, in the picture that there is, it looked a lot closer than six-and-a-half feet.
It's, it's the dark line outlined at the end. I think Tom is going over it with his cursor right now.
Do you know where that is in relation? Is that, I have a tough time seeing where that is, be the street or the sidewalk.
I think the best bet would be to pull up a Google map image to help with that. Suspect that that's the six-and-a-half feet, wherever the property line is. It's not shown in the survey where the sidewalk is. But that fence you see there is being replaced with what's proposed, the exact same location.
Just higher.
Just a little, yeah, which, it's going up to six feet, which is permitted as of right in the, in the district. It is going to, so it's going to maintain that exact strip of grass. It looks like, based on the Google image there, it's a little bit wider than an air conditioning unit.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience?
I'm sorry. There were two letters entered in support. I know one of them was addressed directly to Chairperson Nichols, submitted by Mr. Clark Trow and Kim Trow, who are, live at 41 Beet Ridge. The other one in my possession is an email from the owners of 33 Beet Ridge. The email is directed to one of the property owners, so I'm not sure it was entered into the record. I don't know if I can leave it with, with Dan or Tom, or you want me to read it in?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we do that? Why don't we put it on the?
Okay.
And hand it up, and we'll put it on the objective. Thanks.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. While, while we're doing that, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
As Tom's, or as they're fiddling with it, the, the main sentiment of the letter from the owners at thirty-three Beetridge is that they lived across the street from the petitioner, and they keep their house in good order. Indicative that the fence, too, will also be kept in good order.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Dan, did you have the other one that was submitted from Clark Trow?
Yeah, it looks good.
If anyone knows Clark Trow, you'll know that this is not a short letter, as always.
Okay. And no one's here to speak on this, so the hearing then is closed? Board members, any discussion? No? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note for the record in the draft resolution, there is a condition. The fence is currently in the town sanitary sewer easement, so if they wish to replace it, they must obtain a license agreement from the town board. And the petitioner is aware of that.
Understood.
Thank you. We had the motion moved. We have a second? Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none? Granted four-zero.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
One-twenty Via Forresta, please. Petitioner present?
Yep.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Brian Effinger, one-twenty-nine Rexham Court North. I'm with JEB Architects. So, we are asking for an area variance on the rear setback line of eight-and-a-half inches on the southwest corner of the addition.
You said eight-and-a-half inches?
Eight-and-a-half inches. It was a mistake on my part. The front property line has a slight curve to it, four-thousand-feet radius, so three-quarters of a mile radius. I had assumed incorrectly that it went outward away from the house, which would pull the house and the addition closer to the street. And in reality, it's actually inward by a little bit, so it pushed the house towards the rear property line. And what I thought was under, when they resurveyed it, it is in fact over in that corner, until about halfway through that forty-five feet, and then it goes beyond thirty-five feet for the setback.
Board members, any questions?
And it looks like the, the foundation's already been poured where it is.
It's been poured, it's been framed, and yeah, it's, all right. It would be a severe setback to, to rule against it. Yeah, it's only, yeah, it's only a portion, the first, it's about twenty-four feet, I've calculated, that is over that thirty-five-foot line, and an area of eight-point-three square feet. Just in reference, the zoning code does allow like chimneys and things like that of twelve square feet, so we're even under that.
Anyone from the audience want to be heard on this matter? Yes, come forward.
My name's Mayor Fahey. I live behind this house here. And I thought, I find it odd, I've never been to one of these. I'm a rural follower, so I don't ask for variances or any of that. But everybody laughed when he said how far over it was. The restriction is thirty-five feet. I don't get why it's funny that it's not thirty-five feet. I assume the restriction is to uphold property values. That was one of the reasons why they're there. So, it might be severe to him. The whole thing is up. It's five extra bedrooms, so now it's a nine-bedroom house. And he's only gone over eight inches. Well, what happens when he adds four more bedrooms? For whatever reason, nobody knows why, these are going in, but when he adds four more and he wants to come another foot over. What am I supposed to do? How am I going to be compensated for the loss in property value of my house?
Where are you relative to this property?
Right behind it. And I have a huge yard, a beautiful yard. We take care of our yard. There's another house right next to it, in our yard. How come they can't go and they'll come, you know, within two-and-a-half feet of mine? And why would you say no if you're gonna say yes to this? You gotta say yes to them, too.
We're only dealing in, in, in present requests, not future hypotheticals. But if you had your druthers, you would make him over eight inches, knock down a framed portion of the house, and pull out a poured foundation.
Yes. It's not my fault that they screwed up. What else did they screw up? How do I know something's not gonna happen to my backyard because they didn't put the house up right? There's obviously screws up here, and I didn't do it. It's a shame. It's truly a shame that they messed this up. I don't understand how it gets as far as this whole thing up without anybody noticing they're well over the line.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions, comments? Anyone else from the audience want to speak? Okay, hearing is closed. Discussion board? Discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, do you want to go to the balancing test?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Sure. So, whether an undeserved change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be graded by the granting of the area variance. I would say no to, to that. We're talking about an eight-inch variance. So, we're talking about the difference between thirty-five feet from the property line to thirty-four feet and three inches. So, I don't think that, that eight inches is the cause of any undeserved change that might happen. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Given that the concrete has been poured and the framing is up on the house, I don't think that the benefit being sought is practical. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. We're talking about eight inches out of thirty-five-foot length, so that is, you know, two percent of the, of the variance that is being granted, not, you know, not a substantial portion. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. No, it is not. We're talking about a, a small change from what is currently allowed, and whether the alleged difficulty was, was self-created. Yes, it is, but that is not a, a reason in itself to deny a, a variance. So, given that, that's why I support an approval.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried four-zero, thank you. Next one, number six, five-five-five North Forest Road. Petitioner present?
Hello, good evening. I'm Todd, hi, I'm Todd, Todd Demme. This is my wife Bridgette, and we're here to request a variance to replace a, what I'd estimate to be a thirty-five-year-old fence that we bought with the property that was damaged by the December storm. It'll be replaced by a replica fence. And also in the audience is our neighbor who actually looks in this direction and sees the fence. This is the, the major view here. The variance is for, its proximity to the property line. It is a relatively short street. Only four driveways come off of it. And we're requesting that, that there's a variance for the setback.
So, in essence, you're replacing a fence that's already there?
Correct.
Ellen?
It is. Correct. And it's set back over a hundred feet from North Forest, which may put it in a slightly different concept compared to other reasons why you would have a, you know, that variance for a quarter of a lot.
The street is also dead end?
Yes. That's the end. You can see right there.
No questions? Anyone from the audience would like to speak? Okay, hearing closed.
We have to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried four-zero, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number seven, four-seventy-five North Forest Road.
I'm Greg Schneider with Aurora Architectural Design, working with the owner of the property, Ralph Reitz, and his wife Sarah Lynn. Our proposed project is to replace an existing garage, four-car garage, that is in disrepair, and replace it with, with a new four-car garage that's slightly larger, will actually fit four cars, and more in keeping with the design of the house. So, our situation was that we're trying to design it with a roof line and a roof pitch that would basically match the home. It's fairly stately home on North Forest, surrounded by some other nice properties. And, and so we, I think we're asking for just a small variance in the height in order to get the roof lines to match and, and gain some extra storage space on the attic level.
And, and this property is not visible from the street, correct? If I, is, is the garage visible from the streets? Or is it, it's, it seems to be set back quite far.
Not the other side. Yeah, the west elevation faces the, faces the street.
But there's landscaping in front of that as well, there are trees.
And we stepped, stepped down each end of the garage slightly, so the ends are.
Yeah, the garage is straight.
Yeah.
Board members, questions? Anyone here in the audience would like to speak on this matter? No? Hearing is therefore closed. Discussion of the board like to have on this? A motion on it? Moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried four-zero. Now, it's, I have to say, these drawings are unbelievable. Really nice.
I appreciate that.
I enjoyed looking at it.
All right. We put some hard work into them, and so did our clients, so, uh, thank you.
Number, okay, sorry, here. Yeah, you're right, thank you. Number eight, three-eighteen Washington Highway. Petitioner?
Hello, I'm Dan Agustinak, three-eighteen Washington Highway. This is my wife.
Hi, Danielle Agustinak, three-eighteen Washington Highway.
Go right ahead.
So, we are seeking a variance to install heat pump units on the south side of the house. We currently have only about four-and-a-half feet of space to the fence line there, and the variance is three feet to the fence line. So, we're seeking a variance to go down to about a foot and a half. When, when looking at the other options provided with our property, there really isn't any. So, I did actually bring some pictures today, although they are not included in the application, if you'd like to see them. But in long and short, it's the, sure, let's add those. The front side of the house.
Don't do it again.
So, starting, yeah, so starting with the west side of the house, that's facing the street. Really no, I think, opportunity to put units there. And then if we go to the next picture, we'll see, see the order I put these in. The north side of the house, which is really dominated all by driveway. From front of the house to the back, it's all driveway, all the way back, so not really an opportunity to put the heat pump units there. And then finally, we've got the east side of the house facing the rear. Those are both sliding glass doors. That is the whole back of the house. And it's a pretty significant distance from where we actually want to install them, which if you go to the last picture, is the south side. As you can see, we have some space. But again, it's not within the allotted variance, so that's what we're here to ask for is, or I'm sorry, with the allotted, or permitted space, we're here, here to ask for that variance. I did include on the final page just a, an illustration of where the, the HVAC company was proposing to install them. This seemed to be optimal for using the shortest amount of line to get from the attic where one of the furnaces would be installed down to the, to the heat pump. And then there's another one in the basement, so we have to have two units installed because we don't have ductwork in the house. So, it's one unit to heat and cool the second story, and then another unit to heat and cool the first story. So, I threw in some, just some comments from the HVAC installer there about what, you know, having to move it any other place would, you know, what kind of risk that would introduce to the job. Are there any questions?
Questions?
You had, you talked to your neighbors, I see, and had their.
Oh, yes, and we did. We talked to our neighbors, that last picture that are on the immediate other side of the fence, south side neighbors, and they were in support of us using that space to install the units as well. Yeah, there should be a letter included within the application. Oh, that's mine to add them on, there it is.
Are there any other questions?
Questions? No? Anyone from the audience like to speak on this matter? Hearing is closed. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Have a great night.
Okay, it brings us to number nine, twenty-three fifty Sweet Home Road, area variance. Now the sun is out, in your eyes.
I'm okay. Yes, good evening, Chairman Schubert, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Sean Hopkins of the Law Firm of Hopkins, George J. McCarthy, on behalf of the Appken Essex Homes of Western New York. On behalf of the applicant Essex Homes of Western New York, we're here this evening seeking what we believe to be relatively innocuous minimum building setback variances for buildings located on the interior of the perimeter of the site. Do you want to go to the next slide? So I think some of you will remember the project site located at 2350 Sweet Home Road. This is the former site of Average Joe's. Of course, Sweet Home Road running north to south. The property is zoned MFR5 in OB. As you can see in the aerial photograph, to a large degree, the southern portion of the site has been cleared for approximately a decade. That was done by the previous owner, North Forest Development, in connection with what was then anticipated as a future phase of the office buildings that are located here. Next slide. The copy of the site plan. So what happened here is the approved project was purchased by Essex Homes of West New York from the predecessor, RAS Development of LLC. The total site is approximately 11.96 acres. The site plan that was previously approved by the planning board several years ago shows 48 attached upscale residential units. There's a total of 14 buildings, numbered 1 through 14, consisting of two-unit, three-unit, and four-unit buildings. The overall density of this site is only four units per acre, which is slightly more than what would be permitted by the next lowest zoning classification, R3. The sales price of the units today on the site is approximately $500,000 per unit. And as you can see via the green coloring, approximately 5.25 acres of this site, or 43.8%, will remain permanent open space. Next slide. Do you want to highlight a couple of things? Number one, as part of the original approval, this line that's highlighted in blue along the west boundary, southern boundary, and then heading out towards North Ellicott Creek. That's a six-foot fence that will be installed in connection with the project, a total of approximately 1,150 linear feet, or a fifth of a mile. And then this area, which is actually on the outside of the fence, consists of .47 acres of permanent space located behind the adjacent homes at 566 and 574 North Ellicott Creek Road. Next slide. To show you the actual parcel on an aerial photograph, the key to this slide is, obviously, you can see there's a wide assortment of land uses and zoning classifications in the immediate vicinity, including parcels zoned OB, MFR5, RD, SA, NCD, ND, NCD, GC, et cetera, et cetera. So it's obviously that this multifamily project is not inconsistent with the predominant character of that area. Next slide. Some photographs. So the right shows a photograph of one of the three-unit buildings, and the left shows a photograph of the interior, specifically the kitchen. And again, the sales price on average for these units is approximately $500,000, or half a million. Next slide. So we're here this evening in connection with a request for area variances for building separation, for four particular buildings. But why are we asking for that? The reason we're asking for that is we want the flexibility to provide three different options on the backs of these units. Option number one, which is on the left-hand side, is an at-grade patio. At-grade patio does not require any relief from this board. Option number two, which is in the middle, would be a covered porch. Because you're taking that patio and putting a cover, that actually does trigger the variance. And then finally, and what we expect predominantly to be the request, is to provide a very small, one-story sunroom on the back of those units. The dimensions of that sunroom are 12 feet by 4 feet, and the mean roof height is only 12 feet 1 inches. Why are we doing that? What has happened is this project was originally approved prior to the commencement of the COVID-19 pandemic. Once the pandemic began, and even coming out of the pandemic, what we have found, and I think everyone in this room knows it, is there's more and more demand for people to be able to work at home, and as such, they need a place for an office. So while we call it a sunroom, the predominant use that we're seeing by the prospective owners and the existing owners is having a place to work in a separate room, separate from the rest of the house. Next slide. Think I covered all that. I just want to highlight one thing. So in terms of this building separation variances, we're limited to this yellow oval, buildings nine, 10, 11, and 12. It does not pertain to any of the buildings located either along the west of the site, buildings seven and eight, or the three buildings located along the southern portion of the site, buildings four, five, and six. It's also important to note-
The center of the property there.
Only the center. It's also important to note that building number 12 has already been constructed. Next slide. Just want to point out, so why, what triggers the need for the variance? Amherst has various building separations that are dependent on the orientation of walls and the mean roof height of walls. Those apply in the MFR5, MFR6, and MFR7 zoning district. The mean roof height of these buildings, which are single-story with an option for second-story loft space, is 17 feet 6 inches, and you can see that's labeled here. As such, the required building separation for nine and 10, and 11 and 12 is 1.66 times that height, or 29.05 feet. Next slide. And that's just to blow up that area in the oval, just to point out that, again, you can see where that option for the single-story sunroom, covered porch, or patio is. Again, with the patio not requiring a variance. The two variances we need is the separation between buildings number nine and 10, as measured to the closest point between two sunrooms, is 24 feet, whereas the zoning code would require 29.05 feet. And then if you move over to buildings number 11 and 12, the minimum required, the building separation proposed, is 17.29 feet versus what would be required per strict application of the zoning code, 29.05 feet. It is very important to note that if you look at the building separation from the main walls, back of building nine, back of building 10, we easily comply. In both instances here, we have 48 feet versus 29.03. In buildings 11 and 12, we have 41.29 feet versus 29.05 feet required. So it literally only pertains to covered porches or single-story sunrooms. Next slide. Obviously, as is the case in any connection with a request for one or more area variances, it's governed by the balancing test and the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267B3B, which requires you on the one hand to balance the benefits that will be received by the applicant if the requested relief is granted, and weigh those against any resulting detriments to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The benefits are quite clear here. We're trying to satisfy the well-documented demand for people that want primarily first-floor sunrooms on the back of the units. On the other hand, given that these four particular buildings are on the interior portion of the site, face each other, and do not result in any direct sightlines from adjoining properties, there's simply no detriments. Based on that, it's very clear will not result in an undesirable change in the character of the area or detriment to nearby properties, criteria number one. There are all, there are not any alternatives other than the relief we're requesting that would allow us to receive the benefits we're seeking. Again, the rest of the project site in terms of the layout has been approved. Criteria number three, whether or not the requested relief is substantial. And the key inquiry in connection with that criteria is whether or not there is any harm. In this instance, no harm will result. Criteria number four, whether granting the requested relief will result in adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The answer to that is no, for the reasons that are already given. Four buildings, interior, face each other, no sightlines, no harm. And then finally, whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created. All I would note with respect to that criteria, it was unforeseeable back in 2017, 2018, that the COVID-19 pandemic would speed up trends in terms of working from home. With that being said, we do have knowledge of the zoning code. As such, you could deem it self-created. But as the board is aware, that is not determinative with respect to your inquiry. So in conclusion, we think it's quite clear there's ample justification for the granting of the requested relief, and more importantly, that it is consistent with the balancing test and four of the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267B3B. Of course, I thank you for the opportunity to present this, and welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Are these buildings up yet?
If you, can you go back to the site plan, Tom?
Or maybe more important, are any of the units occupied?
Yeah, so Mr. Schubert, building number 12. So the four buildings that you're looking at this evening, building number 12 is up, and has a rear, a single-story sunroom on the back of the end units.
Well, it already has one.
Right. But the reason it's part of the variance request is because it's separation between buildings.
Board members, questions? Mr. Hopkins? Anyone in the audience want to speak on this matter? Hearing is closed. Board, any discussion? Motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
All seconds.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carried unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. That brings us to number 10. That would be 380 Hartford Road, area variance. Districtener?
Good evening once again, Sean Hopkins on behalf of the applicant, 380 Hartford Road, Inc. Also with me are owners of that entity, involved with the entity, Steve and Janine Palmieri. We're here this evening in connection with four area variances being sought to allow the subdivision of that parcel, and I'll describe that in more detail in a second. Next slide. So the parcel itself is located at 380 Hartford Road. Just so everyone knows, you previously were looking at the setback variance here, an item earlier on the agenda for the North Town Volkswagen. As you can see, it's a relatively large parcel, 3.21 acres in size. It was actually acquired by the existing applicant on December 15th of 1961. Shortly thereafter, it was developed. So what's there today is 10 two-story buildings, consisting of four apartments each, total of 40 units, and then one two-family home located along the Hartford Road frontage. It is all one parcel today. Basically, what the applicant intends to do is sell the existing 40 units, which again, have now been owned and operated successfully for approximately five decades. However, Steve and Janine, involved in the entity, reside in the existing two-family home and would like to continue to reside in the two-family home after the proposed transaction. Next slide. That's just an excerpt of the zoning map. Do you want to note one important thing? The site is properly zoned MFR5. That zoning has probably been in place for at least 50 years. If you look at the nearby uses directly next door, we have this affordable housing, zoned MFR7, North Town Automotive and the former temple, and then North Town Automotive directly to the west. Obviously, we have the I-290 to the north, and then a wide assortment of uses along Hartford Road. It's important to note that if you pictured 1961 versus today, that area has changed very, very dramatically. Literally, when this multifamily project was built, nothing other than scattered two-family homes was located in this immediate vicinity. That's there today. That includes the 290. So that, we do believe, is important. Next slide. What are we proposing to do? What we're proposing to do as follows. We're proposing to sell parcel one, which would consist of 3.05 acres, the 10 two-story, four-unit buildings, 40 apartments, and then Steve and Janine, who are here this evening, would continue to own parcel two, reside in parcel two, which consists of a two-family home. That parcel with frontage directly on Hartford Road would consist of .167 acres. The last bullet points, the most important, no changes at all proposed in terms of the physical aspects of this site. Next slide. So it requires four variances. Three of them pertain to the creation of the two-family home lot, parcel two. Those are a side yard setback for the existing garage, 3.32 feet from the western property line, eastern property line, versus 5 feet required. Lot width, the zoning code would require 120 feet, and that lot has a width of 65 feet. Lot area, the zoning code for a two-family home would require 8,600 feet. That lot will have a size of 7,280 square feet. And then the final variance pertains to parcel one. If you look at the density requirements in the current version of the MFR5 section of the zoning code, in order to have 40 dwelling units, we would need a lot size of 174,240 square feet versus the lot size that we're proposing, 139,890 square feet, or approximately just more than three acres. No changes whatsoever again to the project site. This request is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267B3B. Oh, this is a blow-up of that parcel lot two, just to highlight. 3.32 feet from the eastern property line, the frontage of 65 feet versus 120 feet required, and then the lot area, 7,280 square feet. So the sole reason we need all of these variances is Steve and Janine, it's time for them to sell this existing multifamily project. But rightfully so, they want to stay where they've lived for. Steve has actually lived in the house for nearly 50 years, basically since he was one years old. So this is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria. The granting of the requested relief will result in substantial benefits. Steve and Janine can sell the multifamily portion of the project and continue to reside in the two-family home that they've resided in for decades. The five criteria, whether or not there'll be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, no. No physical changes whatsoever. Whether the relief we're seeking can be obtained in some other method feasible than seeking an area variance, no. While we could have a larger lot for the parcel we're creating, it would come at the expense of retaining ownership of the driveway back to the apartments. Doesn't really make a lot of sense in terms of an easement, as Mr. Schubert would know. So we think we've satisfied that criteria. Criteria number three, whether it's substantial, the key inquiry being whether there's any harm. The answer to that is no. Criteria number four, whether the granting of the requested relief will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, no. No changes whatsoever. And then finally, whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created, which of course cannot be determinative with respect to your decision. The only thing I would note with respect to that criteria, if you look back to when this was built in the early 1960s, it was two versions of the zoning code again, two versions ago of the zoning code. So some of the four variances that we're seeking this evening probably would not have been required at the time the site was built, again, because over time, the zoning code changes. But nonetheless, we think there's ample justification for the granting of the requested relief. So with that being said, we would ask that you grant the four requested area variances, and either myself, Steve, or Janine would welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
It looked like, when I looked at this on Google Maps earlier, that there were identical properties all along Hartford Road. Is that correct?
They're identical, generally speaking. And I used to live on Hartford Road when I was in law school, at 140. Generally speaking, the predominant character of the Hartford Road frontage heading to the west is, generally speaking, two-family homes.
Were they all part of one development at one point in time?
No, they weren't. No. But you can't, you'll notice, I believe, there was probably one builder that built a lot of them, especially on the opposite side of Sweet Home Road. But the predominant classification or predominant use is two-family homes.
And then are the owners planning on staying in the separated lot long-term after the sale of this property?
I would think that. Steve, you want to? Do you know how long you, as long as you can, right? Yeah, there's absolutely no intention for Steve and Janine to move from their existing two-family home.
And then there, is there a offer to buy the primary lot right now?
It's under, it's actually under contract contingent on the outcome of this evening's decision. So we have several attorneys waiting for a phone call.
Let's delay till August 7.
Mr. Schubert, the purchase is involved in 1031 exchange, so timing's important.
All right, those are my questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
You're welcome.
Anybody in the audience wanted to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, hearing closed. Board, any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carried unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Last item tonight is Park School, which is 4625 Harlem Road.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Shell. I am the architect representing the Park School on this project. Up until about an hour ago, I was joined by Dr. Keith Fromm, the president of the school, but he had to run to another engagement, so implying so for the time being. But just by way of a review of the Park School, I know a lot of people are familiar with it, but it was founded in 1912 by John Dewey, who a lot of people believe to be the most important educational reformer- who a lot of people believe to be the most important educational reformer in the world. They think of it as a very important historical institution in this western New York community. I've been working with them for about six months now, and I've had a great experience with that institution. So one of the first things that we talked about was designing a new sign for the school on Harlem Road. If you're familiar with where you pass by the entrance to the campus there, there's nothing that really represents the importance of that institution on that location. Is there a slide that shows us the rendering? Can we zoom in on that rendering? I'd like to start, yeah, start right there. So we went through a few different iterations on this sign, landed on this sign here, this design, and there are three variances in connection with the sign that we are applying for. I'm going to address them in the order that they're shown on this sheet here. The first of which is the location of the sign, pushing into the setback from the right-of-way, that fifteen-foot setback. This is about visibility and making sure that the sign is visible to motorists and people who are passing by. With some guidance from the planning department, we've added onto our plan this thirty-five-foot triangle, this clear-sight triangle. This is about traffic safety. We don't want to compromise that, but we would like to move a little bit further towards the right-of-way. And if I'm looking, if I'm looking at the wording on the agenda here, ground sign will be eight point five feet from the Harlem Road right-of-way, whereas the zoning ordinance requires fifteen feet. So that's six point five feet that we're pushing into the right-of-way past where we would be required to be. So the next variance that we are applying for is the width of the base of the ground sign, and that needing to be seventy-five percent of the width of the sign. If, can we take a look at the site plan that we were just looking at? Want to find the laser pointer, just a moment, please. Is there a laser pointer under here?
Should be hanging from the chain, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so right here, there's an existing column, and that existing column, it kind of hangs out in space there. It doesn't feel like it's really a part of the rest of the campus, but it does have a nice architecture at the base of it. There's a soldier course of brick, and then there's some corbeling and a stacked bond beyond that. And so the design of our sign reincorporates that architectural language into our sign. So we have those two bases up there, and our thought is that foregoing that seventy-five percent width requirement to reincorporate some existing architectural character that's already there is a reasonable approach to the base of the sign. The third variance that we are applying for is related to the height of the sign. There's an eight-foot maximum. Our site is, or our sign, rather, is ten feet high. Our point of view on this variance is with the size of the site and the significance of the institution, it makes sense for us to scale up the sign slightly to represent the importance of the institution to the western New York, New York community. So we are proposing to increase the height to ten feet at the peak of the roof, although the actual sign itself at the bottom portion of that eve is just below eight feet at seven foot eleven. That's all I have for now, unless you have questions. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there other signs on the property?
Yes. Can we go back to the site plan, please? Thank you. There's an electric sign here. It's a digital sign, and it kind of sits quite a ways away from the road and from the entrance, and it's easy to miss unless you're really looking for it. And it's also maybe only about three feet off the ground, and it's another example of a sign that the Park School feels like it just doesn't really represent the institution adequately. So the thinking is that that LED sign would be relocated further into the campus, deeper into the campus, and used more for informational purposes rather than a true sign.
I have a question on the base. So how did you come to that six-foot wide, is that the, is that the width of the two pillars?
Yeah, yeah, if you were to add those two together.
Anyone from the audience?
Good evening. I'm Jane Cox. I live at forty-five eighty-four Harlem Road, which is on the opposite side of the road from the school. I've lived there for forty-five years. My home was built in nineteen twenty by my grandfather, at the same time that Park School moved to Snyder, and he worked there for many years. Nowadays, Park School has activities day and night, seven days a week, and year-round. It is surrounded by residential zoning. The proposed school sign will be significantly larger than the current LED sign at the school driveway. It'll be closer to the road and closer to the sidewalk on that side of Harlem. The proposed site plan shows a stop sign for the school driveway further back than the new sign will be sticking out. My concern is for the exiting school traffic, which is always a problem with the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on Harlem and the rise in Harlem Road going toward Main Street, there at the bottom of the hill. I have several questions. Will the sign block the driver's view of the traffic on Harlem Road, since it's going to be almost seven feet closer? How close actually is the outer edge of the sign structure to the sidewalk where you have pedestrians? When the existing LED sign was installed, there was an agreement with the neighborhood that it would not be lit at night. The school did not abide by that agreement. A lot more lighting has been added to the property. It is quite bright over there at night. They're also asking to remove a full-size red maple tree, which blocks some of the neighbors' view of the school from their front yards. Another question is, will the proposed sign be lit at night? It does not state anything on the site plan. And another question I have, which is probably not relevant to this, is have they considered a traffic signal for their driveway because of the sightlines, because of the traffic? It's become dangerous. So my four questions are, will the sign block the driver's view when they pull out of the Park School driveway? How close is the sign to the sidewalk? Is it going to be lit, and have they considered a traffic signal? If you're going to approve this sign, which is oversized, I'm requesting that it does not have lights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Shell, do you want to come back and just answer those? And I have a comment too, but first of all, will you, I think you kind of addressed the blocking driver's view in terms of the triangle, but you want to address it again for us?
Yeah, I think that the thirty-five-foot triangle and staying outside of that hypotenuse is standard practice for traffic safety in that location, and staying outside of that ensures that there's a clear view for people pulling out onto Harlem Road.
Question is, how close to the sidewalk, the outer edge, will it be, the outer edge?
From the base of the sign, it's nine foot eight. Right about there.
Both, I think, two trees.
Just one, right there. Yeah.
You said it was roughly eight feet from the sidewalk?
Nine foot eight to the column base.
Usually we see the reverse. They're looking to go to LED signs.
The LED sign you kind of said is going to be gone.
Well, I think they'd like-
Relocated to somewhere else on the property.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's a much more traditional sign design in terms of material and the light, the lack of lighting, rather, but not a trendier-looking new sign. It's a very traditional architecture.
And that column that we're looking at is also going to be gone.
That's correct.
The question also was, is the new sign going to be lit?
May we please go back to the plan? And scroll down if you will, please. I'd like to look at this elevation here. So right under this eve right here, there's going to be a little bit of space, almost like the inside of that right there. And the idea is to have two relatively dim LED lights pointing down at the sign rather than up. They'll be concealed behind that fascia board. You won't know they're there, and they'll just be bright enough to illuminate the sign without casting excess light elsewhere on the site.
It looks like from the design that there would have been room to try to be a little bit lower than ten feet. What's the argument for making it ten feet? Because you have, you know, you could have shrunk either one of those up or down.
So a lot of the architecture surrounding the sign is predicated on the sign itself, the actual text being at that height, being at the height so people can see it when they're driving by, high enough to represent the importance of the Park School of Buffalo, and then the roof on top of it ends up, based on that, being ten feet high.
Here's my issue. Everyone knows where the Park School is. I am not swayed by particularly the height. I don't necessarily, the school's reputation is the school's reputation. I don't think you're really selling me, which I have to, but on the height being representative of the nature of the school. I'm struggling with, I'm not struggling so much with the setback from the distance from the street. I'm struggling with the height, and I'm struggling with the base.
Can you please elaborate about the base, the base question?
At least the base question?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a requirement that it be X amount wide. You know, we're seeing designs like this repeatedly. Was there any alternative to, or were there other considerations or alternatives that were considered in keeping in compliance with the width, I should say, the width?
Yeah, in fact, our first iteration included brick that went all the way across, and the base was nearly as wide as the entire sign itself, and the Park School opted to remove that architecture and that construction that was in between those two bases and established these two bases here. May I ask what the reasoning is behind the seventy-five percent width requirement?
It's a design consideration, sir. We want a uniform base, and we're trying to remove the ability to have two posts. Our ground signs, we want to have a monolithic base.
Why?
Because that's our preferred design.
What if there's architecture on the site, like the columns that are already there, that we'd like to, that Park School would like to hold on to? Is that a consideration?
You have the statute. I've explained to you why we have it. You can find examples, good design examples of ground signs within our community that observe it. I don't know what else I can answer for you.
Board members, comments? I guess the only comment I have is I'd like to see the other sign gone. I think that'd be just too much.
That's not going to stay, the other sign, right?
The LED sign?
Right.
Yeah. Moving it deeper into the campus, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it from Harlem Road.
I personally am fine with the base width. I understand it if it is a, it is at a stretch of commercial properties where you'd want a uniform sort of design going down the commercial strip, but this is a unique circumstance, and it is fitting in with the aesthetics of the property. So I'm personally okay with the base. I do have concerns about the height still, though. It is, it seems ginormous in that space.
Okay.
So are we suggesting approval of the reduction of height?
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if that is okay with the applicant.
I would think you'd want an opportunity to look at whether you can get it to the right height. We could table this and-
It can be scaled down. I mean, if we can do nine feet, or if it's just a simple no, then it'll be eight feet. I think, I think ten feet is representative of the size of the site and the importance of the institution. So that's our position. If the variance is not granted, then we can work around that.
You would prefer we make a decision as opposed to giving you an opportunity to go back and discuss it with your client and adjourning and deciding at a later day to see if there's any way for you to rework the design a little bit so that maybe the variance, there are no needs for requests, or the variances that you're talking about are diminished? You would prefer we make a decision this evening?
I would prefer to know how much height we can, we can get out of it and work within that.
What's the feeling of the board? I mean, the requirement is eight. You're going from eight to, and this ten apparently is too much.
Which is, I suppose constitutes a twenty-five percent increase. Is that fair to say?
I don't, I don't really feel comfortable putting a restriction on.
On the height?
Right, because, I mean, to, to, you know, Mr. Shell's credit and keeping in mind what he said, I mean, there's a reason that you're talking about text at a particular level. I don't feel comfortable saying you're going to be limited to X height because I don't know how that's going to affect the actual, like, the wording in the text, so.
The roof may get shallower, the pitch of the roof may get shallower. If we get, if we end up with nine feet, that may be something that happens. There's, there's a way for us to design around it.
I think probably would make sense, I think we're going to maybe adjourn it and allow you the opportunity, you've heard how the board feels about it, to take a look at it, see if you can come up with a design that might-
I mean, unless you want, unless you want to take a shot now.
I think he wants the decision now.
Well, what I'm hearing is the opportunity, it could possibly and probably be reduced in height.
in height. I mean, would you like the opportunity to look at that and see if that's something you can do and then bring it back? Or do you just-
But I mean, we're not meeting next month, so it'd be a two-month delay.
Well, if we take it variance by variance-
Yeah, you could, you could ask the petitioner to go through the five criteria.
Well, I mean, I would be willing to entertain a motion or making a motion to approve the setback-
Okay.
-variance from fifteen feet to eight-
Okay.
Point eight feet, six inches.
Right.
That I could, and taking them individually, that's one. I would move to approve on that one.
Why don't we do it individually? Do that? Want to make that motion?
I would move to approve the variance request relative to the fifteen-foot setback requirement.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to go through? I don't think we need to go through the test. Go through the tester now?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's approved. Then the second piece would be, want to skip down then to the base?
I'll make a motion on the base.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that's three ones, so that's approved. So now we're back to the height. So what do we want to do about the height?
I mean, you know, it's, we're talking a ten-foot height. I just, it might, like, it feels like it's going to be the size of a basketball hoop. This giant monstrosity is going to be, you know, the size of a large shed as the sign, so I'm very nervous about the site, so I-
What would you be comfortable with? Eight is okay. Ten is too much. Anywhere we can go with this tonight?
Motion Friday.
All right. I make a motion, nine feet for the height.
I'll make a different motion to say deny the height because it's ten feet.
Your motion is to just deny the height?
I think we got to figure out if there's a second procedure or the others first.
Yeah, is there a second on mine for nine feet? Second.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor? Nine feet?
I'll vote in favor.
I'm in favor.
Oppose.
I didn't hear. Okay, so that fails. Okay. Another motion?
To deny the eight, ten.
So that would automatically bring it down to eight.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One, two.
I, I don't know where we go from here.
I don't either, so, okay, four zero, so that's denied. So it goes to eight.
If you come back with nine foot, that's ten, that's two feet.
No.
Just for clarity purposes, so the setback and the base are approved, but the sign may not exceed eight feet?
Right.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned?
Move.
Some moves.
Thank you, everybody.
I think so much wrong with the last item.